Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks for your patience, everyone else. So now I'm opening this up for citizen Delafield comments for anything on the agenda at all. Yes, sir?
Terry Giles, live at 1607 Weber Court.
Can you please repeat that address?
Terry Giles, 1607 Weber Court. I would like to offer comments concerning the Commodore parking on the east side of Nagawicka Road. My wife and I own four properties, potentially affected by this, at the corner of Nagawicka Road and Weber Court, about 150 yards from the Commodore or a strong seven iron. We really don't care, one way or the other, whether this passes as the occasional parking lot or remains as it is. All we want is to make sure that it's safe. However, I would like to say that the local neighbors in the area and most of the community fought against the other options for this property and fought for the restaurant. And now that it is a restaurant, it needs more parking to be successful. Just make sure it's safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make comments about anything on the agenda? Yes, sir?
I'm John Schrader. I'm the fire commissioner for the town of Delafield and the current chairman of the Lake Country Fire and Rescue Fire Commission. My address is West 310 South 478 Maple Avenue in Waukesha. On September 8, 2023, I submitted an open records request for information pertaining to email, text messages, memoranda, letters, and correspondence regarding the Lake Country Fire and Rescue budget process for the 2024 from the city of Delafield elected officials and city administrator. I followed up periodically with emails requesting the status of requests through the remainder of 2023 and 2024. I've made two payments in support of this open records request, one on October 3, 2023, for $130, and another on January 22, 2024, for $328.25. Twice during the past year, I was given reasons why this process was taking so long. On March 11, 2024, I was told an employee had left in February from the city clerk's office. On April 15, 2024, I was told that the delay was due to the remaining work from the April elections. I was recently informed on the 3rd of September, 2024, that the city attorney had no knowledge of the request I was referring to, and my question for the city council is when can I expect a response on this open records request that is now over one year old?
Thank you. We're not allowed to engage, but thank you for your comments. We're checking into a passable audio issue. This is for our enormous audience at home. One is enough to make sure it works. Okay. All right. Is there any other citizens that wish to make comments about anything on or off the agenda? Okay, at this point, citizens' comments are now closed. Next one up is 6A, Consent Agenda, the resolution establishing 2025 library levy.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any... All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Abstentions? Okay, September 4th is passed.
Hold on, pause. Who had the first and second? Tell them that again.
I had the second.
Second, who had the first?
Matt and Paul.
Thank you.
And 4C, minutes from the 2024 LCFR annual meeting.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Abstentions? Okay, minutes from the LCFR meeting are approved. So we'll take one item a little out of order just because of some circumstances for a particular applicant. So I'm looking for comments from the citizens specific to item 7B1 or 7BI. That would be for the Greg and John Harriman property. It's a certified survey map that's dividing two properties. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on that item? From the citizens? Nope? Okay. Given that, why don't we take that item now if the applicant would please like to come up? Mr. Harriman? We're good to go. If you wouldn't mind introducing, yes, introducing him, give her name and address.
Danny Ross, 90, so I can hear closer, okay?
Sure.
So whoever's talking, I gotta stand closer because I'm hard to hear, all right?
Okay. So if you want, I'm looking for his name and address, please.
One... John Harriman.
Gotcha.
What is it again? Can you repeat that?
1550 Indian Springs Drive.
1550 Indian Springs Drive.
1550...
1550 Indian Springs Drive, is that... okay.
Okay. Very likely he won't have to say anything, but you're just here if there are any questions. Okay.
She's here for the final.
Yes. So he's here for, if we have questions, we will ask. Okay. So, Mr. Grimmer, if you wouldn't mind covering this item?
Sure. This is the Greg and John Harriman application. Per your minutes, this is about nine and a half acres of property in the corner of Indian Springs Drive. The applicant would like to split the property into two lots. Plan commission reviewed and approved the creation of those two lots. At the time, there was consideration that one of the lots would be a flag lot. The property owner subsequently purchased additional frontage that would meet the minimum with requirements. Therefore, the approval of a flag lot is no longer necessary. I'll make the motion to approve DEL CO 800999008, 1550 Indian Springs Drive, Greg and John Harriman, requesting a CSM approval for a two-lot land division for the purpose of creating an additional home site.
A second?
Who had the second on that? It was kind of tied. Okay.
There's a tie. Of note, there's a comment from the planner requesting that at the time the CSM is filed, that the private easement is also filed. Could you amend your motion to include that?
So amended.
Is the second okay with that?
Second.
All right.
Yes.
So everyone understanding what we're doing? So they needed, in order to create a legal lot with septic, you need five acres. They acquired a little bit of extra land to get them street frontage and the extra acreage for their own septic. And they did everything they were asked. So, any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Abstentions? Very good. It's approved. Thank you very much. You're free to, you're free to stay for the rest of the meeting. You can stay if you'd like, but you're done. Okay. Yeah, all right. You bet. Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, thanks for your patience, everyone else. So now I'm opening this up for citizen Delafield comments for anything on the agenda at all. Yes, sir?
Terry Giles, live at 1607 Weber Court.
Can you please repeat that address?
Terry Giles, 1607 Weber Court. I would like to offer comments concerning the Commodore parking on the east side of Nagawicka Road. My wife and I own four properties, potentially affected by this, at the corner of Nagawicka Road and Weber Court, about 150 yards from the Commodore or a strong seven iron. We really don't care, one way or the other, whether this passes as the occasional parking lot or remains as it is. All we want is to make sure that it's safe. However, I would like to say that the local neighbors in the area and most of the community fought against the other options for this property and fought for the restaurant. And now that it is a restaurant, it needs more parking to be successful. Just make sure it's safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make comments about anything on the agenda? Yes, sir?
I'm John Schrader. I'm the fire commissioner for the town of Delafield and the current chairman of the Lake Country Fire and Rescue Fire Commission. My address is West 310 South 478 Maple Avenue in Waukesha. On September 8, 2023, I submitted an open records request for information pertaining to email, text messages, memoranda, letters, and correspondence regarding the Lake Country Fire and Rescue budget process for the 2024 from the city of Delafield elected officials and city administrator. I followed up periodically with emails requesting the status of requests through the remainder of 2023 and 2024. I've made two payments in support of this open records request, one on October 3, 2023, for $130, and another on January 22, 2024, for $328.25. Twice during the past year, I was given reasons why this process was taking so long. On March 11, 2024, I was told an employee had left in February from the city clerk's office. On April 15, 2024, I was told that the delay was due to the remaining work from the April elections. I was recently informed on the 23rd, on the 3rd of September, 2024, that the city attorney had no knowledge of the request I was referring to, and my question for the city council is when can I expect a response on this open records request that is now over one year old?
Thank you. We're not allowed to engage, but thank you for your comments. We're checking into a passable audio issue. This is for our enormous audience at home. One is enough to make sure it works. Okay. All right. Is there any other citizens that wish to make comments about anything on or off the agenda? Okay, at this point, citizens' comments are now closed. Next one up is 6A, Consent Agenda, the resolution establishing 2025 library levy.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any... All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Abstentions? Consent agenda is passed. Okay. Onto boards, committees, and commission reports. Item 7A, licenses. Nothing for licenses. Back to plan commission, elder person Grimmer.
Thank you. We're going to move on to 7 or B to Holtenbeck, Holtebeck. Referencing your minutes, the Holtenbeck, instead of the former one lot into two, this is three lots into one. So the applicant is proposing to combine three lots to create one three and a half acre lot that would have access to Bay Shore Lane to construct a new single-family residence and attached garage. The property will continue to have split zoning. The residents and boathouse will be subject to the RL2 zoning districts, consistent with neighboring properties, and any backlot development will be subject to the R1 zoning requirements. Plan commission reviewed and approved this at their July meeting, I believe. I'll make the motion to approve DEL C0787981, 1133 Bay Shore Lane, applicant requesting a CSM approval to combine three lots of record.
Second? Is the applicant here?
Sorry?
Yeah, I was just asking, would you like to come up and just, you're available for questions if you'd like to add anything to what you're doing for perspective? Okay.
I have a question, and Matt, you mentioned backlot development, but this is combining into one lot? Is combining multiple into one lot, isn't it?
Correct, this is combining the three lots into one. If you look on the last page of the adendum, there's the lake frontage lot, and then there's two lots, 980 and 983, that are to the, I believe that would be west of that long lake lot, and there would be combining it into one larger lot.
Which I think makes sense, but if it's one lot, why are we talking about split and potential...
My understanding, I wasn't at the Plan Commission meeting that debated this, but my understanding from the minutes is that to be consistent with neighboring uses, that the lake lot be treated like a lake lot, which is the intent of the, of the property owner, and the back lots be treated like a back lot. To be consistent with the neighboring.
Ends up, it ends up being slightly more restrictive, yeah, even though it's one lot. So it's mixed zoning, so either zone, the most, both zonings apply to the individual property when it's done, so things like your shore frontage, like you couldn't have a residential property with lake frontage, it's got to be lake, lake zone, zoning, and so it, any future development or setbacks are going to be consistent with the neighbors on both sides and consistent with the lake lot. It's a little weird, but we've got, we've got weirder ones in the city.
Got it. Thanks.
Good question. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? You're approved.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, what's next, Mr. Grimmer?
We've got the Commodore. Little background on the Commodore.
Please come up. If you, you can go ahead and introduce yourselves, please.
Hi, everybody. Hi, everybody, Keith Traffton, West 331, South 565, Ironway, town of Delafield.
Peter Damsgard, N 58, W 6181, Columbia Road, Cedarburg, Wisconsin.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Just a little background, the applicant is coming to us proposing to amend the existing CUP on the property by removing the maximum times parking can take place on that adjacent lot. The backstory to this is, goes back quite a bit. In June of 95, Common Council approved a conditional use permit to allow overflow parking on the lot across the street from the restaurant in order to avoid that on-street parking. Conditions were provided at that time. The term was for a year. They came back in 1996 and provided an additional restriction that would allow overflow parking on the subject property no more than six times. The applicant came to us in July and again in August. Plan Commission laid out some conditions to allow that, to allow that use on the adjacent property. I'm going to run through those addition, those conditions. Number one, overflow parking is available as long as the restaurant remains in operation, and I'm going to just summarize these real quick. Number two, only vehicles of employees or guests are allowed to park within one hour of the business opening or closing. Number three, employee parking would be prioritized to reduce the amount of traffic, so you don't have cars coming and going, you have employees there who are there for potentially an eight-hour shift. Number four, the site needs to be monitored for waste management and picked up. The application was reviewed by DPW, who recommended installing a painted crosswalk as well as signage. Number six, screening needs to be installed to prevent any light pollution from, from adjacent neighbors. Grass needs to be maintained in mode. Number seven, number eight, the lot needs to be organized in a manner to ensure safe and efficient traffic flow. Number nine, there will be no trespass of lighting beyond the property boundaries. Ten, parking is limited to 62 vehicles. Eleven, entry gates are to remain locked when not in use. Twelve, the road shall remain clear of free and dust, of dust and debris, that's Nag Road, so as cars are coming and going, the road doesn't, you know, get all compounded with dirt and trash, et cetera, et cetera. And then taking a piece of history from 1995 and 1996, the conditional use is subject to an annual review by the Plan Commission. Like I said, this was brought to the commission in both July and August and was approved by Plan Commission at our last meeting.
If I could inject one thing, I think there's a caveat with, Tom, you might want to add to as far as what the, it was addressed in citizens' comments earlier about the safety and the crosswalk, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, we're still working through the details of the crosswalk plan, and it's the staff's recommendation that any approval of a conditional use amendment tonight be contingent upon final review and approval of the crosswalk plan by the Public Works
Matt, was there any restriction on eliminating any future asphalt on that ground? I know the lake welfare was concerned about what are, what are runoff coming off that property, if it would ever be asphalted?
I don't recall any discussion on, you're talking about additional asphalt on that road?
Or putting any asphalt on it, because this...
On Nagawicca Road?
Can I?
I'm just...
Oh, paving it, no. There was discussion on paving the lot, the discussion that I recall was that we didn't want any more impervious services.
Can I add some comment to that, color to that? So we've never recommended putting pavement there. Obviously, the skirt going in by the culvert wood, but nothing on the property itself. We've always advocated to have as just grass. I think some of the neighbors had speculated or had some concern that we would, we're not looking to put asphalt on that. It's a, it's a natural grass, it's a white gerbera's property.
If they were to turn it from gravel, from grass to gravel or proposed pavement, they'd be changing this and we'd come back through this process again. So they can't, they couldn't just do it, and that's never been their intent.
Now, the original conditional use was basically six times, they're mostly from May to October, I think, so then, you know, you don't have issues with snow and mud and things like that. You're asking now for 12 months, how are you going to handle winter's snow and plowing and all that kind of stuff? Just on grass.
Sure, so fair, fair question. The reason we're asking for year round is, you know, December now is not the same as December many years ago, it's been 85 degrees the last two weeks. We envision that this property is only used when needed, no one wants to walk the extra footage, right? Everybody wants to be close to the property. So the reason, the intent of this is exactly what Mr. Giles had said earlier in the public conversation, it's for safety. What we don't want to do is have parked cars on the road, which takes a narrow road and makes it narrower. So when do we envision doing this? Obviously during peak season, weddings. Most people, they, they get weddings from May until October. There might be a couple here or there, but generally that's when the busy peak season would be. So do I think in the first quarter, January, February, March, we're going to have many instances? I don't perceive it, but we didn't want to say if there was a November 2nd, we'd have to come and ask for, you know, an alteration here or there. But we understand first and foremost, it's someone's property, so we're not going to sit there and, and we're not going to put ruts in it, and more importantly, we're not going to put employees at safety's risk, we're not going to put them in a foot of snow.
So the shorter answer is when it's more than half an inch, they're not parking there?
Yeah, that's correct, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's good, that was all good stuff. So there's no, there's no intent to use snow removal equipment to...
No, no.
Do we expect that, that lawn is going to survive if we're parking there regularly?
Well, you know, I've, I've...
It could have turned to mud.
Yeah, fair question. First of all, I think, I wish I would have brought, we've only used it a handful of times, you know, up to six times, I guess. The white gerberas, I don't know about you all, but there's many Fridays I would park over there, and based on Mona and Dane who own the property, they said they've really never had that much of an issue when they used it.
But now we're talking about more than six times a year, we're talking about potentially 365.
Yeah, potentially, that's, that's not going to happen, but theoretically sure.
Sure.
I guess they kind of doubt have towards that. Remember what's happening here is, we're having people coming in, mostly prioritize employees, and they leave, so it's not like, like Delafield days or a festival where people are in and out, in and out, in and out all day long, this is a one in and one out type situation.
So an employee is primarily going to be using the...
We're prioritizing employees, so in the notes what we said is if we recognize, so typically what's going to be, if it's just a restaurant open, we wouldn't need it, right? It's sized. It's when we've got a wedding upstairs and a busy Saturday night, that's a recipe for a busy night, so we tell our employees, hey, it's, it's, it's one of those days, park over there, and that should alleviate enough spaces for people, because again, people will naturally look for the spots as close as they can to a building.
We had an email from a constituent in the area who was concerned about lights, headlights coming into their home, and so I didn't, I'm looking at the map and I see trees all along the border there, and there, in the description, there's fencing, so is that being addressed?
Yeah, so if you can visualize it, if the car is facing west, they'd be pointing towards the Commodore, so that's, or Nagawicca Road and then Commodore. If they're facing north, they're facing towards Mona and Dane, and, you know, if they want to put a fence there, we can, for them, that's fine, and we can put a four-foot fence as well, if we prefer, if they prefer. To the east, as best we can tell, the, the, I think the, the topography starts, it goes straight and then it slightly goes up, so I'm not sure they could really get, and everybody would be pointing out anyways, I think, towards Nagawicca. To the south, that has a bunch of buckthorn and stuff like that, but we do have a fence, and again, you know, I would, with four feet, it should hit most of the, of the lights for cars.
Yeah, it was, you know, sometimes with development, people think they have the blocks, but then the folks who are living there are like, you know, so I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, and listen, if someone comes up and say, hey, we're getting headlights in our windows, we're, we're not going to be foolish not to address that concern.
Thank you.
Any other questions, someone like to make a motion?
There's a point in here, the fence on the east and the south, so there's some, and it looks like there's about, there's a 30-foot lot owned by the applicant to the south that also provides a buffer.
It looked like it, I just wanted to address the concern that was sent to us, that's all.
And I'm looking at the setbacks and thinking, okay, if my, especially, well, all the neighbors, I guess, there's 24-foot setback on the fence, but a 10-foot setback on the stalls. How does that work?
The city ordinance is for the 25 feet for the fence, it can't be within that setback, so that's where we'd set the fence line, and then we would keep the parking stalls, obviously, within that.
Yeah, on the drawing, it looks like there's a 20, 24, 25-foot setback all around, but the document says 10-foot.
I can't speak to the document, unfortunately. The intent is for the, to meet the setback set out by the zoning of the parcel, which is the 25 feet.
Common Council zoning report, Amy Barrows, September 16th.
I think one of my, yeah.
Can we get rid of that 10-foot? Are we allowed to, potentially?
Let's see, I don't know that that would end up being part of, it's not, are you saying it's in the conditional use?
No, it's not, but it was in the notes that Amy, I assume it was Amy that did, right?
You know, I didn't find the setbacks in the conditional use, but it's in the zoning report from Amy.
Okay, the...
I'd be concerned that there might not be, actually be setbacks.
Well, they have to be 24 feet back, that's going to be, that's the fence, that's our, that's our ordinance. And then, assuming that the 10 feet comes from the grid of the parking spaces, the stalls, and that's just a passing, you know, a way to navigate around the stalls that are, that would be designated in the middle of it, and it, but that is not, that is not designated as a, that's not, that's not spected in the conditional use, so the site plan has to meet our ordinance.
So in the west and the north, it could be a 10-foot setback for the vehicles?
So, from my clarity, what I read it is, is the ordinance for the fence is 25 feet, so we want to put the fence for the light trespass, so we'll be within that, but parking setbacks, we could park within 10 feet of the, of the lot line, but per that diagram is how we plan on laying it out.
It'd be 24 feet then, right? Does that mean we're outside the fence?
They, they can, so that's, a lot of this is, is why that, that last caveat is, is part of this, and that is, that is an annual review, and I don't think, as, as Mr. Traffton said, I don't think they're going to wait until a year's up if there's concerns, we'll be sure to be talking to them to, to address them.
Yeah, no, I get that, so...
If they do want to park on the other side of the fence, that's, that'll be a quick call.
So they could be 10 feet from Nagawicca, from the Nagawicca Road, or from the north side, which is the applicant's property.
Correct.
Could be, although I think the trees would, I bet you it's a good 18 feet from, between the culvert and the trees and stuff anyways, but we're not going to test a 24-foot...
I'm not concerned about the west or the north side, just the south and the neighbors to the south.
Yeah, understood.
Okay, thanks.
I just have a question. You've been in business now about two months, open and all, okay? When you got your original permit on this, I don't think you asked to be using that lot, what has changed so much from the first...
Sure, first of all, it's my, it was my ignorance, because honestly, I lived here and when I went to Seven Seas, I just parked there, so I, my simpleton thought it was part of it, so I talked to Mona and Dane, they said, sure, yeah, you can, you can lease it out, so we leased it out, so part of it, this is my pure ignorance. The second item I guess would be, our, we're hiring more employees than I probably envisioned, we've got 152 employees, takes a lot more people to service the property than we envisioned, and so unlike our Milwaukee properties where if we have, like Harrells, if we have 80 employees, maybe we get 15 cars because of public transportation, or people walk because they live there, or Uber, Delafield, it's a one-for-one, right? They, they're coming, they're driving their car, so a larger percentage was taken up by, by employees than we had envisioned.
This, this is, this topic has come up before too during this process, and, and another factor that, on the timeline that plays into an answer is that when the property owner was going through the development, they were vetting operators, so that the Bartolatas was not designated as an operator when they were going through the actual planning of the, of the layout of the parking and some other things, so that feedback as far as parking volume was more of a, it was combined, combined oversight, I bet, between what they thought they knew about the demand based on the size of the property versus what a Bartolatas would bring, so.
Okay. Now, the last question I had is, the agreement with the owner, are you leasing the entire property 100% of the time, or they, would they have the ability to lease it out to somebody else?
No, no, we've got multi-year lease, unless there's something...
So you'll be the exclusive, exclusive user of that property?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And for this purpose, you can put a corn stand or something in there if you're thinking that they could keep, carve this up and exploit it for other business purposes? This is a legacy conditional use that's staying specific to the uses described in the conditional use, and that's parking primarily for employees, for overflow, for Bartolatas, for the Commodore, if that helps.
I'll make a motion to approve the modified restrictions.
I'll make a motion to approve the modified restrictions related to overflow parking on property DELC0782996003, Nagawicca Road, and DELCO78201001, 1807 Nagawicca Road. On the east side of Nagawicca Road to accommodate the restaurant banquet facility known as the Commodore, located on the west side of Nagawicca Road with the proposed site improvements.
Conditioned upon maybe...
Conditioned upon final review of the crosswalk plan by DPW.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Just a couple of comments, because there's been a lot of tension among a few of my constituents about this, which, no surprise. But at the same time, we, myself included, fought to get a restaurant here. So this should be no surprise that with that comes cars and activity. I think with the safety and facility conditions that were negotiated, you know, with the Plan Commission, this is, this makes sense. It's worth a shot.
I would agree. I was concerned and your thoroughness has helped me be more supportive of it and I appreciate it very much. And I'm very comfortable with the fact that it is employee-focused for the overflow. It makes total sense. You have a wedding, you're not going to schlep across the field, you know, so, but thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions?
I'm not abstaining.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to abstain.
Danielle's abstaining. Okay. Conditional use has been granted. Just keep in touch with staff and DPW on those final issues.
All right, thank you for your trust. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next up are revisions to ordinance 3552. Zoning ordinance continues. This one is on text amendment to CBRFs and adult drive-throughs, specifically...
Not adult, the word adult is an odd adder in there. That's, actually shouldn't be in the...
That...
For, in the, in the document title, that's odd that that's in there. There's something else that's being discussed on the staff level that kind of got that word.
Oh, that adult, yeah. It's CBRF. I'm not sure where that adult comes from either.
Not either. Yeah, pretend it doesn't, that's not there. It doesn't affect anything about the ordinance. It's just a description that's used on the document that's linked, that's in error.
So these two items...
We don't have adult drive-throughs.
We don't have adult drive-throughs, yes. Thank you for that. These text amendments to zoning ordinances are for, one, drive-through windows and, two, the CBRFs. First, the drive-through windows, the zoning ordinance currently allows drive-through windows for restaurants in a whole bevy of districts. The revisions only allow drive-through windows through the B2 districts and then, obviously, the drive-throughs are permitted by right in B3, B4, and B6 districts. So the thought behind this was the downtown districts are meant as pedestrian-friendly and not necessarily drive-through locations with, which I believe does not apply to the banks, though. The second revision is the aforementioned CBRFs, which just adds the, the condition to prohibit CBRFs if capacity has been met. State law addresses that, that a community might restrict CBRFs if it's 1% of city population.
Yeah, there's, yeah, so I can backfill some of this. There's, there's state statutes that regulate when you are compelled to grant application, a use for a CBRF, and when you have the opportunity to deny them. And when you have a certain number in your city already, there's, it flips the table saying you really have to prove that it's in the best interest of the community as an applicant, that you can, that you should be permitted to do it. And so we're not banning them. We're just saying that if you have a 16-bed-plus proposal, it's up to the city to determine whether or not it fits our master plan. The way our conditional use was set before is that you were, it was a right to just do it and then we had to prove how they wouldn't meet conditions that we don't even have. So in other words, we're, we're making the applicant, it just eliminates the opportunity for someone to put all the pressure on the city to prove it's not a good use. They need to prove it's a good use. And we're just, we're relying more on the state statute than our own rules, if that helps.
I will move to, I will move to approve ordinance number 835 to amend the text chapter 52 zoning ordinance of the municipal code regarding conditional uses that are permitted in section 52-4220 and section 52-42, 14228, specifically as they relate to the restrictions for drive-through windows and community and other group living arrangements.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? All right, thank, motion passes. Thank you.
And then the last item is, doesn't, to my knowledge, require any action. It's just an acknowledgement of the updated zoning and land use plans that are attached in your agenda.
As we did on Plan Commission, if we could have a motion to acknowledge, pretend like we read it.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay.
I'll take the second. Okay, got it.
All right. Is that it for Plan Commission?
That's it.
Thank you.
For Plan Commission.
All right. Letter C, Lake Welfare Committee, Alderman Price.
Yes, last Thursday, we had our annual Lake Awareness Meeting, which also served as our meeting for that month. This, yesterday, we had it at the VFW post instead of the Nagawicca Lake Yacht Club. The venue worked well. It was a brand-new room with lots of rooms. So we had five areas of main discussion. One was on lake rules put on by one of our police officers. We discussed the upcoming dredging next month, wake surfing, awful lot of comments on that. Mostly more, you know, were negatives. I was kind of surprised at that. Then I discussed the change we've submitted to the Plan Commission for previous surfaces. And there was a pretty good discussion and there weren't any negative comments generated from anybody. The last thing we talked about was the new boathouse rules that we've now put in force and finalized, and that went over fine. So that was it.
Paul, you mentioned the wake boarding that you were surprised by.
Wake surfing.
Wake surfing?
Yeah.
You were surprised by negative comments, like in favor of wake surfing or opposed to wake surfing?
When we did a survey about seven or eight years ago, there was an awful lot of people saying, we don't want any rules, you know, let people do whatever they want. These comments were, this is ruining our lake, it's ruining our, you know, sailing and kayaks and things like that. So it went from more of a 50/50 to, I would say, maybe then the 90% against as far as comments at the meeting, so.
Thank you.
Something to stay tuned for.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Paul. Onto, scrolled ahead, Park and Recreation Committee.
Park and Rec, the, we closed out the Liberty Park Music Entertainment Series with more than doubling our audience attendance this year over last year. So awareness is increasing and I think some of the changes to the way things were scheduled and, of course, the acts themselves are important to bringing in people, but we've got a good trend going there. Park and Rec commissioners are well into the rewriting of the long-range plans for the park. Not done yet, but got some solid drafts going and, including Oakwood Park, which is the topic of item 10A on our agenda tonight.
All right.
That's it.
Thanks, Mark. And if you'll note, the attachment there was meant to be dropped into item E. So Dirk.
Yes?
Public Works Committee.
A few things for Public Works tonight. You can see in the agenda, we've got a number of items before the council, the first one, and we'll kind of bounce around on the, on the maps. First one is a speed limit of 15 miles an hour for Burry's Road, Price Road, and Sylvester Drive. That would be on page three of seven in the attachment.
And Ridley Road also.
Yes, I'm sorry. So, so basically, this is a small community where the roads are narrow and there are a lot of young children in the area. And the neighborhood came to the county, the committee and said, could we please slow down the traffic? It's essentially residential and, and it seems like it meets the need for 15 miles an hour instead of 25. So the traffic staff looked at it and recommended to the Public Works Committee that we do that. Public Works Committee has approved that and sent it to council for final approval. So I would move that we reduce the speed limit to 15 miles an hour for Burry's Road, Price Road, west of Ridley, Sylvester, and Ridley Road.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, item one, speed limit 15.
All right, on to item two, and I would refer your attention to the second map in the packet. So we're kind of bouncing around. So this is the downtown map. And the first item is designating no parking along the north side of Wells Street from Butler to Main, which is just a little bit north, or west, rather, of Revere's there just for that, that little stretch. It just, it doesn't work to have parking there and, and so traffic staff recommended that we, we eliminate the parking for that, that small section there. So I would move that we designate that section as no parking.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, item two is approved.
Thank you. And on the same map, if you scroll up, the next two items, three and four, are really very closely related. The first one is to add a stop sign at the intersection of St. John's Drive and Spanger Street. And I will talk about item four as well because if you notice on the map, the next block to the north of that is the corner of Wisconsin and Kemper Road, which we would also request that a stop sign be designated there. And that's within, in a school zone. And so we just need a little bit better traffic control there. So I would move that we add a stop signs at the intersection of St. John's Drive and Spanger Street and also a stop sign at the intersection of Wisconsin Avenue and Kemper Road.
These are stop signs, these are not stop signs moving north-south on Kemper and Spanger. These are stop signs, or are they?
These are stop signs for westbound traffic.
For westbound traffic.
Yep.
Okay, from, so St. John's moving west.
Moving on to Spanger or Kemper.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Did you make a motion?
Yes, I did.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? All right, two stop signs. Thank you. Those we got, Dirk.
The last item from Public Works, I would direct your attention to page six of this That should be the southwest quadrant. There we are. Okay. And in this case, there's a, there's a section of Willow Drive that crosses Birch and Hickory. And I forgot what the third street is. The problem is basically that there are four-way stops on two of the three intersections. And so to make it consistent, control the speed in the area, the traffic staff recommended that we put an always-stop at the intersection of Willow and Hickory as well as at Willow and Birch. And Tom, do you remember the third intersection in that neighborhood?
Yeah, what page is that?
Is it, is it Birch and Willow?
Yep.
I see that that has a, has a four-way already.
It is, yep.
So the, so you're adding, Birch and Willow has four-way already.
Birch and Hawthorne has a four-way.
Yeah, it's, go ahead.
It's Willow and Hickory that we need to add. It's a, Willow and Hickory currently has a two-way stop and it confuses folks, basically. And folks go zipping through there. We had a comment from a citizen that lives on the corner and he said, he works from his home and watches the people speed by his house every day. And, and it's inconsistent with the contiguous intersections. And so traffic staff recommended that we go to a four-way stop in that intersection as well.
I'll move to approve that.
This is the southwest quadrant?
Yes, it is. It's, it's page six of the attachment.
Where in that southwest quadrant?
So it's kind of in the southwest corner of the southwest quadrant.
Real brief, so Matt made a motion, if we want to continue discussion, why didn't someone?
I seconded the motion.
Okay, gotcha.
So, so Mark, it's, it's straight to the west of like St. John's Road and Exeter?
Just west.
It's, it's to the far western edge of the, the city there.
So, have you started the yellow line on the far left of the page?
I got, I got the streets now. Which intersection do I have?
We're looking at the intersection of Hickory and Willow.
Got it, thanks. And the other, the others are already there.
Correct.
Hickory and, okay.
Anyone good? Need more time?
No, thanks.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? All right, more stop signs.
That's all for Public Works. Thank you.
Thanks, Dirk.
Yeah, for completeness, we should probably get one all-encompassing motion adopting the new map with the, with what was just approved.
I would so move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, maps are approved too. All right, anything else from Public Works?
That's all.
Thank you.
That's all.
F. Delhart Commission, we have a meeting tomorrow. No updates since. G. Police Commission.
Police Commission met last Wednesday evening at 5:30. And we had one item agenda, and that was the approval of the hiring of a new officer. And I would also note that since the approval of the new contract, that interest in working for the city has gone up, which is kind of nice. That's the whole goal, is to retain our officers. So I, we meet as, on an as-needed basis. There is one more officer that we're looking to hire. And that's all I got.
Very good, thank you. Library Board.
Yeah, we met last Tuesday and we approved the, yeah, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. The big thing is September 24th, from four to seven, we have the fundraiser in Wales at Culvers. And for next year, we will be doing most of the month, almost every month will be at Culvers because that has just been very successful. They're looking for more volunteers through the Friends of the Delfield Library and they have a new, the Friends of Delfield Library have a new Facebook. the Delafield Library, and they have a new, the Friends of the Delafield Library have a new Facebook site, or Facebook page, so please check it out, because there's lots of information. They're doing a really good job of promoting events and things like that, and then also refer to the packet for updates from the library director.
Great, thank you. Zoning Board of Appeals?
No meeting, no report.
Okay. J, Promotion and Tourism Commission.
Yes, Promotion and Tourism, last meeting was August 20th, and our wonderful Mary Daniel presented a funding, a request for uplift windows for the Delafield History Center, and the commissioners voted to donate $3,000 to aid that landmark. It draws visitors to the center and hawks in. Very cool. The visitor's center has seen an increase in interest in cycling around Delafield. The Trails and Hike and Bike Trail Map are a very popular publication. Summer docu-series film, they did a filming on August 20th. Episodes five and six with winter coming in titled, Project Called It's In Our Nature. It's really cool stuff. And then, there, we're also working on the budget. Things look good. There's a couple of other things that were sent to me. We have a company that works on our promotions called Z2, and they're launching the, the next set of episodes in the docu-series on September 22nd, which is, of course, the first day of autumn this year. And one other thing, the tree lighting ceremony has been scheduled for Friday, November 22nd, from 5:00 to 6:00 in Clock Tower Square, but we have a need. We are still looking for a tree for someone to donate. So if you have a large tree that you would like to donate from your property, please contact the city. That's it.
Great, thank you. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, don't think there was a meeting. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board. Well, there was. It wasn't meaning that we were all there. We just approved the minutes. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, Matt.
Yep, we were all at that meeting. I think it went well, as well as it could be expected. On the city calendar, it says there's a meeting this Wednesday. I do not believe that's the case. I think I just confirmed on the Lake Country Fire and Rescue website that our next meeting is the September-October combined meeting, which is Thursday, October 3rd at 5:00 PM. Other than that, I don't have any other report.
Okay, thank you. Deer Management Committee.
So the deer hunting season has begun. We had hunters in stands this past weekend. I don't have any official reports of, of kills. I had one unofficial report of a kill for the first weekend, which is good, but we haven't, haven't compiled anything yet. So, everything seems to be going well. We will not have a meeting tomorrow, because we really don't have anything to, to discuss after we've launched everything, and our next meeting will be next month.
Great.
That's all I have.
Alright, other committees and commissions and boards, none. Unfinished business, we have none. Mayor's Report, I'll just say that as a follow-up to our LCFR joint meeting last week, there is a scheduled meeting next week for the municipal leaders and administrators to talk money. I mean, we know, we know what we'd like to do. Can we? Who's paying what is what's going to be on the agenda for us next week. So, we'll have more following that up when that happens. And then, so that's all I have for the Mayor's Report. New business, discussion of possible action regarding a resolution for forestry grant application. Tom, what is this all about?
So this is for a project that our Park and Recreation Commission wants to pursue for next year. And the urban forestry grant applications are due by October 1st, so if we want to submit an application, we do need this resolution. And the project that we're applying for would be to plant $50,000 worth of trees along Oakwood Road at Oakwood Park. And what the, what's being envisioned is it would create kind of a tunnel effect where two years from now, in, actually, in 2027, we're scheduled to put a path through there, and so that these trees would create a tunnel for that future path. The maximum on a grant that one can receive is $25,000, and then it requires an equal match from the community. So it would require $25,000 from the city, and those funds would be, would come from the existing tree fund. So, it would be no new dollars required for the project, and that project would show up as part of the, the budget that you'll be seeing soon.
Tom, would the grant be, would they, would it be an all or none? Like, they would partially fund or fully fund? Is it an all or none? Or would they say, here's $12,000 instead of 25?
What typically happens is they score all the applications, and they fully fund all of the top projects until they get to that one project that's right on the cutoff line, and they don't have quite enough money to fully fund it, and they say, hey, you applied for $25,000. All that's left after, after funding all the projects at you, we only have $10,000 left. Would you, would you still like to do the project if we're only gonna have $10,000 for you, or something like that? Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. And does anyone know what the tree fund balance is now?
It's about 50, it's 50-some thousand dollars.
Okay, so this wouldn't exhaust that tree fund?
No, we, the tree fund is, we've got a five-year plan for that, which takes care of our Arbor Day commitments, as well as replacements around town. And our forester, Sean Heinzel, has, he manages that, as well as designed the layout for the Oakwood Park planting. So the $25,000 comes out of the tree fund that's designated for, you know, specifically for, for this kind of purpose.
Well, I'm not going to complain about trees.
Do we need a motion to pursue the grant? Is that what you're looking for?
A motion approving this resolution indicating that the, well, it indicates a number of things, that you designate that I'm, I can sign the documents, that the city will provide the matching funds, things like that.
I'll so move.
So that's Resolution 202408.
Yes.
Was there a second?
I'll second.
Beat, beat out Mark, so it's Paul and Jackie. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, try and get some trees. Item 10B, approval of vouchers list.
I move to approve the vouchers list.
Second.
All in favor, oh, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Voucher list is approved. Okay, Report of City Officials, Tom.
The only thing that I want to mention tonight is, on September 4th, our Railroad Quiet Zone was supposed to go into effect. It has worked somewhat, and we're getting about 50% compliance right now with the trains. I have been trying to get in touch with those in the railroad bureaucracy at the federal level. It's a challenge, but I'm confident that we'll get it figured out here shortly and, and approach 100% compliance with that train order.
Alright, thanks, Tom. City Clerk, Molly.
So the first is the general election update scheduled for November 4th. This week, we will be sending out absentee ballots on Thursday, September 19th. We currently have 576 active absentee applications. I do expect that to increase, at least to over 600 by Thursday. So those will all be sent out in the first mailing, starting, if anybody should ask. We've been getting calls already about when in-person is. That's October 22nd. And I do have the council chambers reserved for that, so make sure that you send them down here for that voting. We'll have a couple of teams of poll workers assisting some office staff. Any questions?
Is that during normal office hours?
Correct.
Okay.
The, on that final Friday beforehand, the office hours are extended a half an hour to meet statutory requirements. The next is the website redesign process is underway. If council would recall, we did approve in the budget the improvement for the website. It got pushed back a little bit, but I didn't want to continue pushing it back, so I'm trying to juggle that with all the other things we have going on with the election. The first step in the process was to get some ideas of, like visually, what the city was looking for. We are kind of limited to design style, so I did send some information to the council to review some design styles, and I have got that feedback. So I have to put all that feedback together and provide that to the design team, and then they'll kind of go forward with that. And then on the backend, the one thing that we added on was that navigation and cleanup. So then, staff will kind of simultaneously be working on the secondary team to do that. So we're kind of working through that. Any questions on that process? Okay, the final, then, included in the packet is some information that I got from the county about the dog license fund. So there was a claim brought against the fund, which I don't think they recall ever having, but that will reduce our payback that we get by about, they expected 25%. I think it's probably negligible in the overall scheme of things, but I just wanted to get that out there. But the other thing, tomorrow, they are discussing increasing the fees for dog licenses from the county. If you feel passionately about that, I believe those county supervisory meetings are during the day, or you can reach out to the local supervisor, county supervisor. That being said, if there are increases, I would think that we would want to consider increasing our fees to kind of cover those additional costs. But something to discuss at a later date if and when that passes. Just wanted to kind of let y'all know. It was coming down the line. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Molly. So City Treasurer's Report is in the packet, two of them, July and August. Is there any council requests for future agenda items? As always, you can reach out to me or Tom or Molly with suggestions. Given that, there's correspondence in the packet, and seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 8:07 PM. Thank you.